Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
We need a motion to adjourn the...
Need a motion to adjourn the executive session, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. I need a motion to close the council of the whole.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the Municipal Board's report.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has everybody signed those minutes?
Yes.
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of the Cow and the regular minutes of May 16, 2017.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Okay. City manager's report?
Yes, good to meet you, Mayor. This is the city manager's report for May 30, 2017. Final reminder, Hackensack Shred Event is scheduled for June 10, rain or shine, in the Sears parking lot. Flyers are available at City Hall Lobby and information on our website. Our recycling coordinator runs the event. There is no... Strike that. There is a change coming up in our RFQs going out. For this year, we have added a traffic engineer and environmental engineer. For RFPs, will be added to the public relations consultant also for submittals. Twice a week, garbage collection will begin June 5, 2017. Information tags are currently being distributed by our sanitation department. Routes 1 through 5 will be Monday through Thursday pickup days. Routes 6 through 10 will be Tuesdays and Fridays pickup days. Recycling will remain the same pickup day that residents have during one-day pickup schedule. Rubbish collection. The rubbish collection for the remainder of 2017, our flyer has been approved for printing and will be mailed at the end of next week. Mailing will be sent out to residents and additional flyers will be available at City Hall and DPW. This schedule will take away the fifth pickup day to avoid further confusion. The FAA Teterboro Meeting Regarding Flight Path Complaints tenably is scheduled for June 15 at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers here in this room. This meeting will be open to the public. We will advertise at our website, email, blast, and nixle. Please mark your calendars if you wish to attend, and we encourage residents and people to attend. We've also reached out to the Hackensack University Medical Center also. Memorial Day service took place Monday, May 29 at Veterans Park on Hudson Street. In attendance was the full mayor and council, myself, Hackensack Fire Department, Hackensack PD, and their color guard. An excellent representation from the American Legion for the solemn and respectful tribute to our veterans. And the only thing I have to add is that the Poplar Street has now been completely paved last Friday, so the street's done and it looks really good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up to the public just on the budget amendment. Anybody who'd like to speak on the budget amendment only, please come forward.
I need a motion first.
I need a motion to open to the public.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on the amendment to the budget, please come forward. Seeing nobody from the public. Ma'am, did you want to speak on the budget? I saw somebody stand up. No? All right. Motion to close to the public on the amendment?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Okay. Resolution 165-17, the adoption of the city budget for 2017.
This is the resolution for the 2017 municipal budget adoption. We need a motion.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. All right. Moving forward. The motion to remove from the table, Resolutions 149, 117, and 149-17 through 152-17 from the table, please. Need a motion?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Now, we're gonna do these one at a time?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 149-17?
This is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to process an involuntary accidental disability retirement application on behalf of Alexandra Lopez Arenas.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 150-17?
This is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to process an involuntary accidental disability retirement application on behalf of Keith Moreno.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. 150... 151-17, please.
Resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to process an involuntary accidental disability retirement application on behalf of Mohammed Cheek.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 152-17?
This is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to process an involuntary accidental disability retirement application on behalf of McKinley Garvin.
Motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. New business. Resolution 166-17?
This is a resolution... Hang on one second. For the final adoption of ordinance number 12-2017, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170, entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 49, entitled Parking for the Handicap. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay. May I have an offer? A motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Need a motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 12-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 167-17?
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 13-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 49 of the City of Hackensack entitled Alcoholic Beverages, to make technical corrections and conform to previously adopted legislation of the City Council. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on Resolution 167-17 and that one only, please come forward. Seeing nobody from the public, please, motion to close?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt?
Need a motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmembers...
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 13-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 168-17?
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 14-2017, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for various improvements to the city-owned buildings and appropriating $250,000 and providing that such sums so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance of the General Capital Fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing none, motion to close to the public? Whoa, sorry.
Moving so fast. Kathleen Salvo, Hackensack. Who came up with this amount, $250,000? Because I can think of those from...
Ted?
Ted.
Myself and Jim Magan went through the immediate issues that we need to take care as far as municipal buildings and city parks or any of these conditions. Everything from roofs to air conditioning to plumbing issues, generators. So, the figure that we came up with was $250,000. So, that's the current appropriation that we've had of the general capital fund. Jim could...
Improvements? You have any specific...
There are certain improvements that have to be done right away, okay? We'll be doing another bond ordinance before the end of the year for other capital projects, but there's a lot of improvements, things that can't wait for that. So, that's why... $250,000 is not...
This is not a lot of money for...
Oh, it's not?
It's not. I could do a house with it. I mean...
But it's enough to cover the repairs and the renovations that we have to do right away.
So, priority? And then what's... When are you gonna do the other stuff?
That'll be sometime in the next...
Because there's plumbing issues. That bathroom alone hasn't been done since 1900s. I mean, that alone, and the bathrooms next door.
This $250,000 is for repairs, not remodeling. It's a... That's a whole other level of issue here.
Okay. Just repairs? No painting? No...
Nothing.
No painting? All right. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public on this ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Motion to adopt, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 14-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 169-17?
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 15-2017, an ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170, entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code, to amend Section 49.2, entitled Parking for the Handicap.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 15-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on June 13, 2017, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 170-17?
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 16-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 90 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Food and Drink, to amend certain regulations and restrictions governing the conduct of ice cream peddlers. Now, should I mention the change in this?
Yes. I need to make it clear that if you look at the resolution or the introduction of this ordinance, it shows a part that struck out. That part should not be struck out. That's part of the ordinance, the introduction. This allows for... Only for ice cream vendors around parks when there are no snack stands open. In other words, if there's baseball or soccer, somebody has their snack bar open and they're fundraising, that's when the ice cream trucks can't be in there. If there's nobody there, if the snack bar's closed, they can do that, along with other events as well. But we don't want to interfere with the fundraising of any of the sports programs. So, that's the way it reads. It struck out on the ordinance, on the introduction, but it's not supposed to be. So, we need a motion?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 16-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on June 13, 2017, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 171-17?
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 17-2017, ordinance authorizing a five-year tax exemption pursuant to NJSA 40A:21-1 at SEC and Section 153-6 at SEC of the Code of the City of Hackensack for the property designated as Block 303, Lot 7, on the city's official tax map, more commonly known as 161-163 Main Street.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
Be resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance 17-2017 is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on June 13, 2017, at 8:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the mere regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk bein she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 172-17?
This is a resolution authorizing the City Council of the City of Hackensack to authorize settlement of the litigation entitled Carl Maggie versus City of Hackensack Superior Court of New Jersey, Bergen County Law Division, Doc. Number B E R L 6179-15.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 173-17?
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second by Pataglia.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 175-17?
174.
I'm sorry. 174-17. My bad.
This is a resolution authorizing tax appeal attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated May 30, 2017, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 175-17?
The resolution authorizing the tax collector to prepare and mail estimated tax bills in accordance with P L 1994, 172.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 176-17?
This is a resolution for the authorization for the City of Hackensack to process an involuntary accidental disability retirement application on behalf of Elvin Hernandez.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 178-17?
177.
177-17. I keep crossing them out ahead of time.
This is a resolution for the authorization for the City of Hackensack to process an involuntary accidental disability retirement application on behalf of John Herman.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Like to... Need a motion to table? 178-17, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 179-17?
This is a resolution authorizing an ambulance reimbursement?
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 180-17?
This is a resolution to award contract for engineering services for the combined sewer overflow permit 2017.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. That was 181?
Yes. This was...
181.
Resolution 181-17?
Resolution to award bid contract to AAA Emergency Supply Company, Inc., purchase a fire hose.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims? Councilwoman Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Want to take a break?
No, that's...
For the consent agenda?
Let's just keep going.
Resolution 182-17?
This is a resolution qualifying parking consultant.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Resolution 183-17?
This is a resolution authorizing the payment bills.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Okay. Before we go into the consent agenda, does anybody have anything they want pulled or wanted voted on separately?
Yes.
Okay.
185-17.
Okay. You want to pull that?
Yes, please.
We're gonna pull 185-17 and vote on that separately. Any other ones? Seeing none? Resolution 185-17?
Told you that one first. This is a resolution authorizing to extend agreement with Vision Media Marketing, Inc., for a period of no greater than two months.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
No.
Mailer Ross?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the rest is for the consent agenda. Oh, it's gonna be Resolution 184-17, which is Resolution authorizing a place-to-place liquor license transfer for the Cheesecake Factory Restaurant, Inc. They're relocating from one side of the building to the other. Resolution 186-17, a resolution authorizing inclusion in the Bergen County Community Development Program. Resolution 187-17, resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with the County of Bergen to supersede the cooperative agreement dated July 1, 2000, and amendments thereto establishing the Bergen County Community Development Program. Resolution 188-17, a resolution concurring with the planning board's redevelopment investigation regarding Block 410, Lots 1, 2.01, and 22, commonly known as the home site, designating them as an area in need of redevelopment. Resolution 189 is a resolution concurring with the planning board's redevelopment investigation regarding Block 302, Lot 2, commonly known as 142-148 Main Street, and designating it as an area in redevelopment. Resolution 190-17 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals for the purchase of the building naming rights to the Hackensack Performing Arts Center. Resolution 191-17 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests, qualifications for professional services, and Resolution 192-17 is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for proposals for public relations consultant services. We need a motion.
Need a motion to read, to accept the consent agenda as it was read, please?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Okay. Thank you for that. Want to take a water break there? Okay. Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Conestino's absent. Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Killen Gettis?
Aye.
Mailer Ross?
Aye. Okay. See, I'm guessing some people here are for the M&M Building. Go ahead, Joe. Sorry. You're up. You're first.
Charles McCallus, 119 Dorchester Road, Hackensack, New Jersey, one proud, disabled American veteran. I haven't been coming to the meetings because I have a little problem, but I've been watching you on TV. Two meetings ago, Mrs. Castriano, Deputy Mayor, had referred to people up here asking questions about Robert's Rules of Order. The last meeting, the city attorney had said that we had to honor Robert's Rules of Order. Could you tell me when the city adopted an ordinance or a resolution for Robert's Rules of Order?
To be honest, Mr. McCallus, I don't know if it was adopted. I just know it's a guideline that most councils, municipal councils across the country...
Now, most councils have to adopt it.
Well...
Check with your attorney on that.
I will double-check on that, but we were following Robert. I'm trying to think of the exact incident that brought that up that night.
Ask the counselor. He was the one that put it up.
He wasn't...
I wasn't... I wasn't here that time.
This was different counsel.
Oh, the other counsel.
He's in...
They all look the same to me anyway, so that's...
He's on vacation.
Next question. I'm going out with some questions.
Go ahead.
We've got a basketball stadium that's being built with 400 seats, but we can only see 200 people. Why are we doing 400 seats?
It's... The configuration is there's 400 seats. Do you have that the way it's set up?
I don't want you to answer my time. Answer it when I'm...
All right. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I got more questions.
Yep.
When we're running those basketball things in the soccer camps and the ball field, who's gonna run that?
The soccer camps?
Yeah. The soccer stadium with... Whatever it is.
There'll be somebody. There'll be somebody stationed there.
Who? Who?
A city employee.
A city employee?
Yes.
Are those positions gonna be advertised?
Most likely. We have to guess.
No, either yes or no. There's no most likely.
No. We have to put an ad... We'll put an ad on our website advertising for someone to work in, from the rec... Through the rec. department in that building.
Will they be civil service positions?
I'll defer to the manager on that. Would he have to be?
It would depend on, is this a summer employment or this is full-time employment?
You're telling me. You guys are the ones that are running it. I'm not. You're asking me?
I'm guessing...
You gotta be kidding me. You're the city manager. How many... You get me the big bucks. I'm not, sir. I'm not, sir.
I'm not here to be confrontational, I'm just saying I.
I'm not being confrontational, I'm being, I'm asking a question to the mayor. I don't really want answers taking up my five-minute time.
Are you talking about a counselor, someone who's part of the rec program?
If you have.
Are you talking about the rec director?
What he's talking about is, is our rec department civil service now? Those, then, then there'll be civil service.
Civil service?
Yes.
So I can put my position, my, my paperwork in?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
If we advertise it, anybody can apply.
And you realize disabled vets have number-one status, right? You wear that, right, in civil service?
I do, sir.
What time do I go and pick my locker up or anything, you know that?
I get you a special, okay, you're welcome, Chuck.
I got a job, everybody!
You can still throw a mean curveball. Before we go any further, I know there's some discussion about the M and M Building tonight. I do have the city planner here who can assist us in answering any questions, so I may be deferring to him on some of these issues. Go ahead.
Brownie to Sharif, Second Street in Hackensack. Before I begin on the M and M Building, may I want to give you condolences, and I hope it's not too late, um, on the passing of your mother for myself and for my family.
Oh, thank you, Sissy, appreciate it.
I wanted to say that publicly to you because I hadn't had a chance to do so.
Thank you.
I am here to speak about the M and M Building. As you know, seniors are very near and dear to my heart. My mother's ninety-five, and children, of course, I'm always surrounded and flanked by them. I probably have more than everybody up there cumulatively on that panel up there. Of course, we want to talk to you about that M and M Building. We would like you to hear the public side of, um, how we feel about that, because I don't think that has been done. Back in two thousand and thirteen, we had a team called Home. We welcomed you guys to the city. That was in, um, April. Few months later, you sent out, uh, there was a letter sent out, "The City Council Seeking Residents Who Are Willing to Serve on an Adversary Committee Which Will Study the Possible Development of a Community-Centered Multipurpose Recreation Complex for the City." The committee, co-chaired by Councilmembers Sims and Pataglia, would be in charge and would be looking all, at all aspects of such an undertaking. Interested parties should apply. I know I, I probably was one that applied, and I haven't seen that since you've undertaken this, uh, development at the M and M Building. We respectfully requesting that you hear the city, hear what the children want, not what you guys want or what the adults want. Let's hear from the children, let's hear from the community. I know for the most part, a lot of the children, as you know, I deal with them all the time, they're looking for, um, uh, swimming facilities, they're looking for a arcade, they're looking for skating facilities. We need to hear from the community what, what the children want and what the young adults want. In year two thousand, uh, the Home Team did a lot of work. We did a lot of work with the J C C, the Y N C A, we studied, we had call for meetings, um, back then, to no avail with the, um, council that was in place at the time. We're asking you to hear the community. They didn't listen to us back then. We had lunch, we wined them, we dined them, we did everything we could. We tried to do fundraising, we reached out to California where they had, um, successful people running community centers. All over the, uh, United States, we reached out to a, a lot of people, but if we didn't have the support of the council, then we really didn't get anywhere. We were pounding, pounding the beat and everybody, it was just deaf ears that were being turned on. So we're asking you to, to consider what the community wants. Stop anything that's going on now, listen to us, and let the children, let the voices be heard. We're not gonna be here forever. Our children, the next generation is coming up, council members. We'd like for them to be heard and for you to listen, just like you did with the sanitation department. We respectfully ask that you listen to the community here at large. Thank you.
Carolyn Davis, Hackensack, Stanley Place. Mayor and I give my condolences to you also at this time, um, in the loss of your mother.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm standing here tonight, um, as a person that's in favor of redevelopment, but not the redevelopment as it's going right now. There are priorities, and one of the priorities is something that has faced our city for a long time, and that's the flooding. There is a flood damage prevention ordinance by the state of New Jersey, and reasons such, the legislature of the state of New Jersey has delegated the responsibility to local government units to adopt regulations designed to promote public health, safety, and general welfare of its city. I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but it's about flooding. I live on Stanley Place. Maybe your homes aren't affected, but anyone who lives on Stanley Place, River Street, Forest Street, we were flooded, you could ride, uh, float a sailboat down our street the last, with the last flood. This is going on too long, and that's a priority to me. It's a health hazard, number one, because our sewer system still is not developed the way it's supposed to be. It's only separated right now where the developers are down by Main Street. It's more important to me for the homes. I don't know if you realize it is a health hazard, and it's up to you at the city council to make sure that the priorities are taken care of first. We flood all the time, all the time, and it's, it's a health hazard, it's dangerous, it costs us money, uh, in our areas. So I want you to rethink, we have these big developers come in, uh, let them work on our sewer system, especially on River Street. We are planning on putting this dome and, and down in the Broadway area where the M and M Building is, they'll all get flooded. There's priorities, and if you can float bonds for this development, I think you can find a way to float a bond to take care of that. To me, that's a priority, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Sir, how are you?
Mayor LaBross, uh, Mayor of Minnesota, Council.
Evening, Mayor, how are you?
Jorge, pretty good, yourself?
Good.
Jorge Meneses, four-twenty-four Hamilton Place, Hackensack. I feel an obligation to, to come here and give you my perspective on the building, um, on the M and M Building. I've been, uh, the acquired director for St. Francis Church for twenty-seven years, and I've been a parishioner as well. And you bet that I have seen the transformation of the neighborhood from the Italians to the Colombians to the Dominicans and now to the Ecuadorians. Do you know that the, the church, the archdiocese wanted to close the church down?
No, it did not.
Do, do, do you know that we fought tooth and nail to save it? They wanted to move all those parishioners from there to Immaculate Conception Church and Umbrella, Umbrella and Avenue, you know, unthinkable. And so we, we show the church, the upper echelon of the church in the world that, uh, this would be actually doing bad to the community, to the neighborhood. Now, coming to the M and M Building, if you, you know, that parking lot has been there servicing this church for forty years, forty years, that church is a hundred years old. If you close the parking lot, then i- in effect, you are closing the church. A church with no parking, you know, uh, when we have Holy Week, for example, Palm Sunday and Easter, uh, we have two masses each Sunday, it's very difficult to park. So I'm trying to see why do we need to do this? And my question, Mayor, is can we do this somewhere else? I'm, I'm not against building this, but why don't we do it at the Johnson Park? How about Stye Park? You know, that park needs revitalization, needs, you know, life. It could be done over there. It's gonna look crowded here, no matter what you do. Now, I'm not going to, you know, lecture and, that when you do, you make decisions, those decisions affect a lot of people, and if the decision is good, of course, nobody's gonna fight it, but if the decision is not, you know, affects the, the people negatively, then it's gonna be a problem. I, I ask you to consider, uh, building this, this, this building next to the M and M Building, uh, and, and just think of that community when, when you make that decision. Thank you.
I will, Jorge, let me, I'll answer Mayor Meneses real quickly. We have no intention of taking any parking away from the church. That was already an agreement that the church would still be using the parking lot on, for their masses on Sundays and Saturday evenings. We have absolutely no intention of stopping that, so that would continue to go on once that building was, uh, was done, but thank you for your comments. Sir?
Rich Galper, Clinton Place, Hackensack. Mayor, I don't often come to meetings, but I, I come tonight with a, a very, very grave concern. I don't know what's going on with the relationship between the city and our police department, but something's just not right. This council has been far from friendly, uh, to the police, and it, it goes back to a s- a simple attempt to have a blue line put in town. Everything was done to stop that. We're one of the very few municipalities in northern New Jersey without a blue line. It was a major, major fight. The council was very, very tough on it. Needless to say, we never got the line. It's been one thing after another. Now we have police officers out, guys with babies, wives at home, not being paid. I really think the city has put the cart in front of the horse on this. Hackensack has never been famous for, uh, labor relations. We've lost every round. This is gonna, this is gonna bring lawsuits like you've never seen before, there's gonna be a whole wave of lawsuits, and I'm gonna tell you honestly, in my opinion, this is strictly my opinion, the, the gates of hell are gonna open. The city has really, really not thought of these men and the plight that they have. These guys didn't ask to go out on calls and be menaced and injured in the way they were. They didn't invite this. Now we turn our backs on them, they're awaiting pension board rulings, and their pay and their benefits stop. Mayor, it's unheard of, we've never, ever done this in the city before. Now, I know it's a personnel matter, I know you can't discuss the details, and I, I wouldn't expect that you would, but I think the council has got to review this, they've got to look at this. Your, maybe your labor attorney is not the right guy for advice, maybe it's cha-ching too much for him. You've never really won a round when you've pushed labor in this town. It's always come back to cost the taxpayer, one way or another. I'm urging you, Mayor, step in on this and stop this craziness, because this does not have a happy ending for the city. You cannot have a functioning city with a police department in discord. They've had no effective leadership since Mordega's gone, and it's only gonna get worse. These guys do a good job, they deserve to get paid. The city owes them a little more than we're giving them. That's all I'm asking. Protect the city now.
Sal Moretti, I was born in Hackensack about seventy-eight years ago, but I'm living in Paramus now. I would note that, uh, a while back, I was, before Judge Ralph Polito, uh, I was very friendly with him, and he was, uh, considering a case involving, uh, a matter. We were in the Bergen County Courthouse, and, believe it or not, uh, the courthouse was shut down because of a flood. It hadn't rained for maybe two or three weeks, uh, but, uh, the water apparently had, uh, come up into the parking area so that a Corvette, which was parked there, along with about three hundred other cars, had water right up to the windows. You know how, uh, high that would be? So I said, "Well, why don't they just pump the water out to the river?" And, uh, then I looked further and I saw that the river was where the parking lot was. The entire river was at the same level as the parking lot. I found that to be brilliantly weird, because, uh, quite obviously, uh, this is a question of, of the river height, and if the river goes that high, you can imagine the courthouse was shut down. In fact, the courthouse was shut down, and Governor Florio took advantage. He, uh, removed Judge Ralph Polito, replaced him with Ellen Koblitz, and Ellen Koblitz ruled against me. Just to give some sort of clarification as to how these things might occur, we've heard about, uh, Governor Christie being a bad guy, uh, but here we're going back to that, Governor Florio period, and of course, Mr. Corzine replaced, uh, him. Now, uh, last time I was here, um, I was speaking with respect to some perhaps abstract things, and somebody mentioned to me that I really shouldn't talk about the old days, but, um, I, I have been reviewing some, uh, theater work, which I was involved in years ago. One of them was Forbidden Planet, which I put together when I was, uh, a sophomore in high school, and I visited the set while they were making the, uh, the movie, which we've been looking at for the last, I guess, fifty years. I also, uh, was, uh, in Hollywood with, uh, people who were prominent in the theater. One of them I noticed, Lana Turner was an associate of Johnny Stampaquito, uh, who died when I graduated from high school about, uh, I guess, sixty years ago. But, uh, to go back into, uh, the theater, uh, it's fascinating to me that while some of the theater perhaps is, uh, only theater, some of it is, um, oracular, it's predictive of the future. And, uh, one case was the case in which Spencer Tracy appeared opposite, um, Lana Turner and Ingrid Bergman in nineteen forty-one at the beginning of World War Two. It was a brilliant, uh, uh, play and made into a movie by, uh, Robert Louis Stevenson, Jekyll and Hyde, and, uh, it, it reminded me of the issue of professionalism and the professional soul in modern man. It's sort of a religious issue, but it's also a very practical issue, and perhaps it's the type of issue which, uh, the height of the water in the Hackensack River, uh, should be paid attention to, because you, you really do need, uh, some soul to, uh, abate the flood under circumstances where you have, uh, a, uh, entire courthouse shut down. I see I've, uh, my five minutes have expired, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Too tough act of an act to follow, even though I have the two backwards. I don't even think I can follow that act. Thank you. I said, uh, how many terms somebody wants to serve? I probably couldn't serve one term as a president, I probably couldn't serve one term as a mayor, um, and know exactly what's going on in the city. But then again, that's not my forte is to know everything and not know what time of day it is. And I hope I don't spend the next five minutes, uh, beyond the time of just two seconds mentioning this is my purpose of being at the microphone and sharing some things. If we have a snowstorm, if we have three snowstorms, and somebody has to get around to three areas in town, it might be hard to get to those areas and get the snow up. Sometimes people, you know, buy shovels, big shovels, get the shovels from next door and they borrow one, so that is helpful. If that helps them, great, that's why they say neighbors should help neighbors, that's how I would think. And, um, if we work too hard and we don't get rest, it just makes it difficult for everybody to try and get, um, get the things that they have to get done, either whether at the store, gasoline, it may be a, you know, time that gas is not, you know, able to be gotten because the station, gas stations are closed, and where is the closest one? I said, "We don't live in a three-block radius," but I could probably sometimes work from, um, an eight-by-four room if I had to be in business, for how many businesses, God only knows.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hello, mayor. My name is Officer Elvin Hernandez. I just wanted to come here and speak today. I was involved in the shooting on May 21st, 2015. And I just wanted to give you a little insight on that day that occurred. I had Elvin's mother and brother, who I both know. I'm related to the family. I know his whole entire family. I had them there that day screaming while I was sitting there giving this guy chances. I put my life on the line that day. I was scared to death. When everything happened, I left and came back twice. I gave this city my everything. Body, soul, everything. This was my dream job. That day changed me. And for you guys to be doing this, you guys should be ashamed of yourselves. I put my life on the line. I got a wife and a year and a half year old at home right now. I got a two-year-old son. What am I supposed to tell the mother now that I can't pay the child support for my son? What am I supposed to tell my wife when I get home? Hey babe, I can't pay the rent this month. I left and came back twice, sir. Twice. I didn't leave and try none of that nonsense. I left and came back twice because I wanted to do this job. But I realized I couldn't anymore. Because none of you had to fire your weapon that day to somebody that you know. Not only that, but see his bullet-riddled body on the floor, blood everywhere. And I still had to cuff him that day. I just wanted to give you a little insight on that. Before you make a decision like that, just remember that you're not only affecting me, you're affecting my family. Mayor LaBrosse, do you have a family?
Absolutely, sir.
Do you have kids?
Absolutely.
If a police officer saved your kids or, or a police officer was doing their job and something like this happened today, would you, would you be proud of that?
Would I be proud of the officer saving your lives? Absolutely.
Would you be proud about a mayor and council trying to put out involuntarily when I already put in my papers for September 1st? So you're telling me three months is too much for you guys? Three months? Are you, like, it is, Mayor LaBrosse, for all due respect, you called me two weeks ago. We had a conversation, am I right or wrong? You told me, what did you tell me? You tell me, Elvin, don't worry, we're gonna take care of this.
That's correct.
Okay. So you taking care of this is me? Is this, this is taking care of me and my family?
You know I can't discuss this.
Okay, you don't have to discuss it, but I'm asking you a personal question. Do you think this is taking care of me? We had a conversation, man to man. I told you my worries and everything. A man's worries and everything I told you that day. And you're gonna sit there and tell me this is how you're gonna take care of me after I put my life on the line? That day? Did you even know the back end that I had to deal with? I know this kid's family. Do you understand? You know, I'm the only one that showed up. You know why? Because I actually care. How am I supposed to pay my rent? How am I supposed to, if, when my kids get sick? How am I supposed to take them to the doctor? Oh, sorry babe, you got no insurance? After I gave this city everything, I came back twice, sir. And I didn't complain when I came back. You can ask any of these officers over there. I didn't complain not one time. I did my job, but I realized I couldn't do it no more. The day that I handed in my badge and gun, I was in tears in the captain's office. Because I gave up my dream. I ask you to reconsider this for me and my family's sake. And one more thing, sir. What type of message are you sending to the other officers when they get into another incident? Because it's not if, it's a when. When this happens again, in the near future, what type of, what type of message you're sending to the officers? What if that split second that they're thinking, oh my God, if I pull the trigger, what is the city council's gonna do to me when I, when I, what if I can't come back? Not one person sat there and called me and said, hey, Elvin, why don't you come in and we talk like, like, like men? Not one person. Ted, you called me? I was reassured by you that I was gonna be taken care of. I was reassured. How do you think I felt when I received that rice letter? Huh? How do you think I felt? How do you think my wife felt? It was on the day of my son's birthday. Huh? How do you think that, how do you think my son felt that day when dad was, wasn't there all there? After I gave the city everything? You weren't here when I did that. You were not here. So you don't get that decision to make. You don't, you don't get to make that decision. You don't get to bring that up. Apology, sir.
It's all right.
I just asked that you reconsider this?
We have a five-minute rule and I let you go over about two minutes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next speaker from the public, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Robert Morene and I'm currently a taxpayer of two homes in the area of the M&amp;M building. Actually, it's about 100 yards from the building. I got one question for Mr. Sims. He can answer later. You had a game in North Bergen back in March and you put something on Facebook saying, thanking the North Bergen police for keeping the North Bergen fans in the stands while the Hackensack fans left. Otherwise, there'd been some kind of altercation developing. Is that correct? You can answer it later. Is that what happened once we started tournaments in this new M&amp;M building? Is that what we're gonna have to look forward to? All right? I don't think that, you know, the residents of that area are looking forward to something like this happening in the future. All right? And then in the, in the zoning and ordinance in map, chapter 175, dash 1, dash 3, the intent of this chapter is to establish a precise and detailed plan for the use of land and buildings in the city of Hackensack enacted in order to promote and protect the public health, safety and morals and the general welfare of the people. How is this building gonna do that? It's gonna, it's gonna bring the house values down in that area. Nobody's gonna wanna live in that area once this building is up. Not with the ruckus it's gonna cause once this building goes up. All right? I can't think of the words right now. The lifestyle of the residents, after six, seven o'clock at night, it's gonna be disrupted. Now it's a quiet neighborhood. All right? With all this ruckus with this basketball stuff going on, it's gonna affect the whole neighborhood. It's gonna change the whole, whole outcome of the neighborhood. All right? And what's happened to the property values of the houses? Once this thing, you know, nobody wants, wanna live in that area once this building goes up. All right? And, yeah, and the safety, it's gonna, like I said, after, you know, during the games or even after the games, there's gonna be crowds outside and who knows what's gonna happen? You know, if a ruckus broke, you're gonna have to have a police, you know, coverage and all this other stuff. That's basically what I have to say, you know? It's, it's just not right. And thank you. Thank you.
Just gonna respond to that. Those games that we were, that you had mentioned, sir, Mr. Morene, I think it was?
Yes.
Were high school games. All right? It was a high school game that Mr. Sims was at and high school games are a little different than bitty basketball and little kids' basketballs and sometimes they get a little heated. But I, you know, there's a misrepresentation going on out there about events at this building. It's not going to be really much different than what's there now as far as basketball goes. These are not, I don't know who's talking about all these giant tournaments and everything else. We're taking a facility that's not safe for our children. We are modernizing the building. We're adding a senior element to it. And, and that's it. And I understand there's some parking questions and we're working diligently on that. I have the planner here. I plan on letting him speak a little bit about this. But this building is not going, this is not going to be used much differently than you have now. And I, and I totally disagree with bringing property values down. You had a state-of-the-art facility that allows for, to, to take care of your seniors and to keep your young people off the street. That, that raises your property values, makes people want to move into your neighborhood. So, and I, you know, respectfully-
When did you take an appraisal portion of real estate, mayor? Come on.
I respectfully disagree with you. And Mr. McCullough, please.
I have a broker's license.
Okay. So you're saying the building as it stands now brings down property values?
I didn't say that. You said it.
Well, logic would tell you it would based on those assumptions. Next person, please. Thank you.
Grace Pardo, DeWolf Place, Hackensack. I wanted to follow up on the last council meeting and to address some comments that were made after I left. Since the last council meeting where you, Mayor LaBrosse-
Yes.
-gave us, gave me your word that you were gonna look into Councilman Bataglia's use of the turf field at Johnson Park. We found out a couple of things, few things, actually. As far as I know, I, I think I remember requesting it. Councilman Bataglia still has not provided his team's roster. However, after some research, we found out and we know that his players are mostly from Glen Rock. Maybe one from Oakland, maybe two from Oakland. And only two are from Hackensack. Having said this, I wonder if Glen Rock would let one of our teams go and practice at their turf twice a week? Having established as well that he is in fact a private club, I also am aware that as of last Thursday evening, he still had not paid the fees for the use of the turf fields. So realistically, he shouldn't have any access to the turf fields. However, we also found out that Councilman Bataglia has conveniently found a loophole in the procedure regarding the use of the city fields. Whereas since the fields are green acres, they are supposed to be made available for free to be used by public or private organizations for a specific amount of time per year. We've been in the program for over five, six years and we've never heard of this rule. And basically stating this, I guess the city regards Councilman Bataglia's team as part of the general public, but all other private organizations that request permits have to pay. We were told that, we were told by, that the amount of space that he gets with respect to as much as we get is very minimal. And that's absolutely true. We serve over 300 kids from Hackensack. He serves 15. Two from Hackensack. I'm not sure, maybe, you know, this doesn't set a really good example for how the city manages and, and actually provides services for their kids. To make matters even worse, we inadvertently found out that Bergen Catholic is using our turf during Leo's, Councilman Bataglia's time on Saturday nights. We also discovered that Councilman Sims takes out permits for all the basketball courts in our schools from September to September and that people ultimately have to go to him to get space instead of going to the rec. Basically, he sublets his permits. At the end of this last city council meeting, Councilman Sims was very quick to point out that the grass at Johnson Park was not being used 90% of the time, which was based on nothing factual. I have a grass field schedule if any of you would like to see it. And we use the grass field as follows. Sundays roughly 12 to 6 for games. Monday nights, one team. Tuesday nights, four teams plus goalkeeper training. Wednesday nights for two teams. Thursday nights for three teams. Friday nights for practices that got rained out during the week. Saturday morning, more games. The schedule is also posted on our website if any of you care to actually look at the website. Months ago, when I first approached this council regarding the sports facility, you, Mayor LaBrosse, promised me that you were gonna look into providing another soccer field, grass field in one of the other parks.
Right.
You still haven't actually done that either.
Haven't solidified anything?
So basically, we have a councilman that does not pay for field use, uses his position on this council for his own benefit and another councilman that sublets his permits and lies. I'm still trying to figure out where the honest government campaign slogan comes into play.
Your five minutes is up, but I will again say I'm gonna turn this over to the city manager because he would be the one dealing with this.
We are meeting with him on June 2nd, yes.
And I do not watch over these guys and when you bring it to my attention, that's when I bring it to the city manager's attention, which I'm doing. My job is not to follow these guys around to see when you're renting fields or leasing fields or whatever you're accusing them of. That's his job. But I thank you for bringing it to my attention and again, hopefully he will resolve this issue. All right? Thank you.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Next, please.
Yeah, I'm Rich Serbo, Spring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. You know, I talked to Deb Carlson last week. Now, it's too late to have a recount, okay? The time is over. Someone had to go to court. But the day after the election, Dave Sims had the most votes and he would have been traditionally the mayor. Now, during that time where-
Wait a minute, stop the clock. What? The word traditionally, all right?
Yeah.
You know our form of government, Rich.
I do.
Form of government has no such thing as you run for mayor.
But that's not my point here, okay? That's not my-
Well, I'm giving you my point.
It's about breaking the rules.
Yours is a moot point. It doesn't go by vote.
Which you might have done. Okay, so the night of the election, David had the most votes. I distinctly saw that. And the next morning, he did also. Now, there's a point where human involvement transcribes those numbers from the electronic machines onto paper, okay? Now, for some reason, a day later or later in that afternoon, you kinda inched ahead. Now, all I'm saying is no one, no one asked for a recount. The time limit is over, by the way. Someone had to go to court, which was last Wednesday. That was the deadline. It's 15 days. So it hasn't been done. There's no recount. But was someone put up to change a six to a nine or a one to a seven just to have you save face, John? Is it possible? Is it possible? Yes or no?
Not for me, sir. I'll tell you that.
Okay, fine.
All right.
Now, let's go to other, let's, let's go to other business. I wanted to bring that up because it, it's a possibility. It really is. And no one's gonna listen because no one wants to hear it. And you save face, oh, I got 11 more votes than Dave. Two, the second day after, you know, we, we looked at the numbers. So let's let it go, John, okay? We'll let it go and I want to talk about other things.
I'm waiting to go.
Now, the problem you have with, with decision-making, okay? Especially this, this M&amp;M building, which really doesn't belong there. It's just not congruent with the neighborhood. It's, it's a, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood that it's, it's gonna be disrupted in, in, in a certain way. It will, okay? But let me just, let me just say that you have no public involvement, you know, you have no public involvement plan. You understand? It's, it's a, it's a two-way communication, public involvement. I've been talking about it for years here and you just ignore it. But a good leader and a good council and a, and a, a good government in our city should have some kind of plan for public involvement. You know, what is it? You understand? Is it involvement? Is there collaboration? Are there different levels of public involvement? Do they get to, to, to be part- Do they get to be part of a decision-making process? What is the collaboration? It's a whole spectrum of study, John. Do you understand? A leader should have some study in public involvement and what it means. And I'm sure Mr. Ehrenberg would agree with what I'm saying. You don't do it at all. You just, you make an arbitrary decision, and that's it. Hey, we're putting this in this neighborhood. We don't care what you say because you have no plan to deal with the public and what the, you know, what the discussion should be at that point. Please, do me a favor and try to, you know, set up with some of the, some of the people you have around you to have some form of public involvement. Mr. Mangan, I'm sure you understand what I'm talking about. I mean, you know, a leader that decides not to listen, you know, after a while, he's going to have people around him that have nothing to say, okay? So maybe you have, just no one has nothing to say around you because you don't listen. You don't listen at all. You don't listen to the public. You have no plan to listen to the public. It's a communication. It's a two-way street, John, okay? Okay, now, if there's any time left, I'm sure you're going to cut me off, right? Deborah, am I?
No, you stop a minute.
You're a timekeeper, John. I remember calling you a timekeeper last year. Now, listen, I want to get to the real, I want to get to the real truth of that Main and Mercer project. You keep saying that the only problem there is because they damaged the building and there was a lawsuit there. There's more there than meets the eye, and you know it, okay? So why not get the truth out about your showpiece on Main and Mercer and why it went down the tubes, okay? Will you, will you tell the truth?
I have told the truth.
Will you tell the truth about what's going on at Main and Mercer?
Of course I tell the truth.
Huh?
You could see the, you could see the building next door boarded up.
Well, you're going to just leave it go with a little lawsuit about the building that was damaged. There's more to it than that, and I hope you just pony up and tell the truth, okay? Thanks very much.
This is DePasco. If you give me one second, please. Public involvement. That's what these meetings are for. We never listen. We had public involvement, you had police officers speak here, all right? Please, I'm speaking now, Rich. You had police officers come up here, you know, pretty much spill their guts to us, public involvement. You had during a sanitation issue that was, we were looking into, you had a large part of the population come out and speak on it. And we listened, and we didn't change it, all right? So don't say we don't listen. We hear, okay? We do hear. As far as the building on Main Street goes, I've got the guy holed up to change the votes. He's inside that building, so we're going to keep him there until they knock it down, Rich. All right? Next, please.
Regina DePasco, Parker Avenue. Public involvement. You know, I was, I was going to give up on coming to these meetings because I always feel like I'm banging my head against the wall, but you sucked me back in. Last meeting, I was publicly called a liar. You know, I know, I did not lie. You said you asked me, Mr. Mayor, to run in 2009. I said I did not know you then. Your wife came up here and called me a liar. When, before that, you and Mrs. Canestrino were calling me out. Those are Gestapo tactics. That's why people don't want to come here and speak, because you put them down. You trashed them. So, public meetings? You don't encourage it. You don't. Vision Media, I spoke on this before, you're greasing their palms. They got you elected, you're giving them two more months. But I also told you about the unindicted co-conspirator in the Marty Barnes case. So if you choose to ignore that, that's up to you. But you're spending taxpayer dollars needlessly. You're not saving in the small spaces, you're not saving in the big spaces. And I don't know anybody whose taxes have been lowered. Nobody. So there's another, maybe the fine print said no lower taxes, okay? Nobody that I know of. The rec center. Okay, what sucked me back in on this is you, Mr. Sims. It's as good as being put up. Really? You basically told us, "Too bad, we don't care, I'm doing it." That's what you said. We care. It's our money. It's our money. It's the neighborhood. I go down to that neighborhood. People live in that neighborhood. It's not just for basketball, that neighborhood. The parking there, you know, oh, wait a minute, wait, let me make this comparison. It's the First Ward's LTAC, except the city's doing it to the neighborhood. Okay? It's the same thing. You fought against the LTAC on Prospect Avenue, but you're going to turn around and do it to the First Ward. And that is what you're doing. And making us foot the bill on top of that. Making us foot the bill. Parking in that, in that lot? Mr. Mayor, you're quoted as saying you don't want the neighbors parking. That was on March 8th Planning Board in the minutes. You can look it up. You're quoted as saying you don't want the neighbors parking in that lot overnight. Church is almost every night. It's not just Sundays. There's church at night. There's, that parking lot and the streets are filled, filled, every time I've gone down there, whether it's during the day, at night, it's always filled. It's being used by the people who live or who have reason to be there. Now, to put up this monstrosity, and that's what it is because it's going to be no, 100% lot coverage, 100% lot coverage, which, did anybody check this against the master plan? Did anybody, you know, open space as far as that? Did the planning board review a site plan? Not to my knowledge. That was not a site plan review on March 8th. Absolutely not. But as far as, back on the parking, I know I'm jumping around. I think it's irresponsible for you to put this big thing there that people don't want. People want a pool. Put a pool there. Put a pool in the M&amp;M Building. Find another place for the basketball. People want a pool. Are you listening? Are we having a public discourse here, okay? But before you spend our money, you should talk to us. You should find out what we want. You should care, not, "It's as good as being put up," okay? That, that just, that's what really got me, really got me, Mr. Sims. But you also promised the people in neighborhood that you would meet with them about a parking solution. But you don't have a parking solution, but you put it out for bid. So you're already going to build the building without a parking. How can you do that? That is irresponsible. You don't have a complete plan. How can you expect the neighborhood to accept this building when they don't know, are you going to take ratables off? Are you going to buy neighborhood properties? Are they going to lose their local grocery store? Because you need parking for this building that nobody wants. Nobody wants this building. Nobody has come up here and said, "Well, if anybody has, they're the minority." The majority of people do not want this building. Do not want bigger basketball, senior, you have senior. What do you use the senior, the M&amp;M Building for? Twice a year dinners? What are you going to do there? There's another senior center that people go to. And they can't, and if you have no parking, they're still going to be walking two blocks with their walkers, okay? All right? Which was your other concern, Mr. Mayor. It's still going to be. There's not enough space there for it. It's going to ruin the neighborhood. You are dropping a bomb on the neighborhood, okay? And we're going to need more police. And I can't believe you're turning your back on the police. I cannot, again, again.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing that motion to close to the public? You're too slow, yeah.
Can't get up that fast. Kathleen Salvo again. I think Sissy's testimony says it all. We in Hackensack have been waiting so long for a real recreation center. Larry Riley has tried, we'll have tried, and we want to be part of the process, and we're being left out. We're being turned away, we're being ignored. And with a price tag of almost $6 million, that's a lot, a lot of money. Mr. Mayor, we're double talking. You're saying it's not going to be used for older kids and it is going to be used? Why do we need a 400-seat capacity if it's, all we need is a gym floor. All the M&amp;M Building needs is a gym floor. A gym floor and air conditioning. And we could do that with pennies, okay? We don't need a soccer dome. The soccer people told you they want to play outside. All we need is to refurbish the field a little bit. We're talking about pennies here. We're saving taxpayers' money. We don't need a senior citizen facility. We have one, we share, it's shared services, and they're doing a great job. The county does that. Senior citizens need to have their taxes reduced. We're on fixed incomes. We don't want a senior citizen. So if he asks a senior citizen, "Do you want a facility or do you want your taxes to be stable?" 100% is, "We want our taxes to be stable. We don't want any increases." That's what we don't want. As far as, it's going to be used for tournaments. Why else would you have such a big place? Mr. Sims shotguns all the basketball facilities we have. He's got all the schools, he's got all the gymnasiums, he has Carver Park. So why do we need any more? And it's not for our kids, meaning our kids, Hackensack kids, okay? Don't get this thing a racial thing or whatever. Our kids are Hackensack kids. We don't need it for tournament kids because tournaments bring problems. We had a block meeting the other night, and the cops even said to us, "We can't have tournaments. We cannot police this area when the, when the kids come out of tournaments." So why a 400 facility or a 200 facility with 100 parking spaces short? And even, and there's only 72 parking spaces, and now Fran's going to come up and say, "Well, I'm going to give you 17 more." Big deal. You have 100% lot coverage for parking, 100% lot coverage is for a building. And to say St. Francis is going to be allowed to park there? How? If he has a tournament and St. Francis has church, who's going, we're going to have fights in the parking lot as to who parks? You can't schedule it because you're not going to-
You couldn't schedule it.
Well, then, a $6 million thing that's not going to be used because it can't be because we don't have parking? Think about it, John. $6 million. And if we need to put parking, it's another million dollars. So don't say we're going to give it to the church because you're not. Because right now, it's, Fran is going to give us all these bogus numbers that he always gives us. Right now, it's used 20, it's used every night, every day. So then, when is, when are you going to use, when are you going to use it for basketball? If you had just said that St. Francis is going to be allowed to use it. You can't give it to St. Francis, and you can't give it to the basketball team at the same time. It's the same lot.
St. Francis can't have the, have the parking lot 24/7.
Well, they have it every night. So when are your basketballs going to happen? Every night they have it. Every Saturday night they have it. Sunday they have it.
Discussion we had was for Sunday masses and Saturday masses.
And when is, when are we going to, $6 million, when is he going to play soccer? He's shooting himself in the foot because he's not going to be able to use it for soccer. You can't promise the same parking spaces. Only Fran does that on Main Street. When he says there's, there's parking for, on the street, and there's parking for the businesses, and we don't do that. So it's impossible. You're doing, it's a double, it's a, it's a, an oxymoron. It doesn't make sense. So Mr. Sims is shooting himself on the foot too. Because if we're going to give it to the church, you can't give it to him. So this is not what the neighborhood is. You're shoving it down the throat. The property value is going to go down. There's no green acres, there's no open space, and it's a, it's a, it's a big, a big negative impact, and it's not keeping with the master plan that says to preserve and to protect neighborhoods. That's the number one thing in the master plan. Preserve and protect neighborhoods, and that's not doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Savory. I live right on Lodi Street, across the street from the church. The goal and objective of Hackensack Master Plan, to maintain and enhance the quality of the established neighborhoods. This basketball dome will be a hardship for our, for our First Ward, and there's, that's all there is to it, okay? We have, you're trying to bring people into the city, you're building all these wonderful things to bring people into the city. We have people in the First Ward, and we have businesses, and we maintain ourselves. We have all kinds of businesses there. Barber shops, bodegas, everything there, okay? People park their cars and go to all these establishments. And you want to build more establishments up Main Street, more stores. We have stores here, which will have to close because we have no room to park as it is now. No matter how small this facility, how big this facility, that is not the place for it. We do not have space right now without a facility ever being there. We're not saying we don't want kids to play basketball. We're not saying we don't want kids to play soccer. That has nothing to do with it. But in that neighborhood, we cannot accommodate it. We don't have the space. You're going to close down businesses, you're going to close down churches, and we can't park in our own driveways. That's all there is to it.
I'm going to bring up Fran. Fran, could you come up for one minute, Mr. Reiner? I just want you to talk about, I know we received a letter from Joe Mecca today because we're looking into the issues about the planning board and what we need to do with the planning board and what his recommendations were.
I'm sorry, one more time, Mayor.
Just Joe Mecca's, who is the planning board attorney.
Yeah, so I reached out to-
Do you have his letter?
I reached out to Mr. Mecca today, who's the planning board attorney. The project does not require a notice. It's known as a courtesy review. And so it doesn't require a site plan because it's a municipal project.
Correct.
I'll leave that, I'll leave the legal decisions up to the attorneys, but I'm just conveying what, what Mr. Mecca told me today.
Right.
So the process that we walked through at the last planning board meeting was based on the master plan. It was not based on a site plan application. So, so as, as far as Mr. Mecca is concerned, we've met the legal obligations, which is that notice has to be placed on the agenda 10 days prior to the meeting.
Okay.
I'll leave that, the rest of that up to Mr. Mecca if there are further questions about that. Regarding the 400 versus 200 seats, this facility is, the gymnasium that is being proposed is very similar to both existing recreation centers and proposed recreation centers in, existing in Cresskill, Edgewater, proposed in Ridgefield and River Edge. It is a, a single basketball court, which is full-size, that runs parallel to Holt Street. It has, it then has a, it has a curtain that drops down into the middle, which allows for two smaller courts to run parallel, perpendicular to Holt Street. So you have either one large basketball court or two small ones with a curtain down the middle. So when we say there are 400 seats, at no given time can any more than 200 seats be open and being used. For example, if you're using the large court, there are seats on one side that can open up for the large court. If you're using the two small courts, the seats for the large court have to be closed, and only the seats on the end can be opened for the two small courts. 100 seats on one side and 100 seats on the other side. So this facility is very comparable in terms of size to recreation centers that are either built or constructed in Bergen County and/or are in the planning process for Bergen County.
So outside, could I ask you real quickly, outside, basically the court size is regulation, the full court's regulation. There is now an existing inside the other part of the building, a regulation-sized court.
It's a little bit smaller than the regulation size that's in the current building. The current building, I believe, it's about 80 feet.
But there's absolutely no room for seating or viewing of a basketball game.
Other than the stage area, there's no seating now in that.
Thank you.
In terms of the parking, there are 77 existing spaces that are compliant on the existing parking, in the existing parking lot. There are three spaces that are non-compliant right now. One of them has a trash receptacle, so there's no ability to park in that space. And there are two handicap spaces that don't meet any of the handicap requirements. They don't have any of the, the spaces that are necessary between the two handicap spaces.
Right.
The bid documents that, that went out have 77 parking spaces, which includes six compliant handicap spaces within the 77. We've been asked by the planning board and by the mayor and council to determine whether or not we could achieve additional parking on-site. We're able to achieve 94 total parking spaces on-site. That would be within the grass area closest to Broadway. So right now, there would be a total of 94 parking spaces.
Kathy, Ms. Salvo, please.
77. 77.
No, you spoke already, Ms. Salvo. It's 77, and 17 is, is 94, I'm sorry.
77.
17 is 94.
Is 94, I believe.
I got 94 too, Fran. So, all right.
I'll go through it again. It's 77 existing spaces where the bid document, we were asked to, Mrs. Salvo, I'm just trying to answer your question.
Mrs. Salvo, you cannot speak from the audience, please, he has the podium.
I'll, I'll rest on what I said.
Okay. Thank you for your help. That's all, that's all he has to say, Kathy, all right? That's it. Thank you. Now, well, here's what's going to happen. On the, on the next planning board meeting, we're going to have what's called a courtesy review, which will be open to the public. We want everybody from the public to come to the planning board, all right? You'll have planning board members there to listen to you about this issue, all right? So there'll be what's called a courtesy review on, Fran, the date?
June 14th.
June 14th.
But it has to be legally, it has to be legally posted in the paper, never works.
I'm not so sure about that.
So again, I, I will defer to the, to the planning board attorney. He has made it clear to me in an email and I'm sure he's going to make it clear to the city tomorrow that because this is, this is a courtesy review, that the only notice that is required is that it be posted on the agenda 10 days prior to the meeting.
Right.
That there is not a notice in the, in the newspapers that are required as a part of this particular application. That being said, the application will be heard for courtesy review by the planning board at 7 o'clock on June 14th.
Okay. So, so you folks here tonight have noticed June 14th?
Yes.
All right? Uh, yeah, I believe so. I have to double check on that. I don't think I-
You can go, I mean, you can be there.
You have just had to be careful of what you, what you say.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Tony Haverty, Berry Street, Hackensack. I, I think that this situation is just simple. If people don't want it, why are you going to go through with it? Why are you pushing it? If people don't want it, I don't understand why. You can't look at other sites to put it. I, I, I don't get it. You say you want people to come, you say you're for the people, but did you, did you, did you survey the area? Did you survey the people? That's my question. What, what is the problem with looking into other areas? That's my question.
That's it?
That's it.
I don't want to use your time, that's why, Ms. Savory. This project has been known about for a long, long time. There's been presentations on it, it's been in front of the planning board. It's, it's, people have known about it, there's been renderings put out showing people what it's about. Now that it's starting to come to fruition, now, obviously, the public is, you know, obviously coming out to speak against it. And I understand that, so.
So no ones have, has ever come out?
No, they have come out, but not-
Have you done any surveys?
No, we didn't do surveys, but we, the people have come out and spoken out against it, but we've also spoken in favor of it. And there's been some back and forth on it. But this is the most people we've seen come out against it, all right?
All right. So is it possible to look into other places to put it?
It's certainly possible, Ms. Haverty, but this place is already, it's an already existing recreation center that basically is going to be used the same way plus some senior element to it, all right? This is not going to be, everybody thinks because you're, you're, basically you're taking the grassy area and putting the basketball court there and using the rest of it for the seniors, all right? And some meeting rooms. The facility itself is not going to be used, like I said before, any differently than it really is now, except it might be open for some, some other sports to use it as well. Volleyball and stuff like that. I mean, we're trying to provide recreational facilities for our children, all right? There's a limited amount of open space in the city, this is already an existing recreation facility. And that's really the driving factor for that.
So you're, basically what you're saying is that you don't care what they think?
That's not true at all.
That you're going to do it anyway?
That's not true at all.
Basically, that's what you're saying.
Well, I could say this, and, and there's no way, no, it's, it's, that's not even close to true, but no matter where you put anything, someone is going to have an opposition to it. But you already have a center there. I mean, then we should look to close the M&amp;M building down.
Surveyed other areas and to find out if there would be any opposition to it?
Well, would you be in favor of closing the M&amp;M building down?
Nobody said to close it.
No, I'm just, I'm just making an analogy here. Would you be in favor of closing that building down?
I, I'm saying that you should, you should have your, you should have the planners or whoever survey other areas and if, and if, and if it would be better to close the M&amp;M-
This was looked at, and this was the best logical plan, because it's already an existing facility.
And do a big facility somewhere else, then fine.
Ms. Havery, I'll say something.
Sure.
About 30 years ago, they wanted to put that rec center in Carver Park. And the people in that neighborhood down in the first ward or whatever ward it is, I'm not sure what ward, they refused. We're not going up there with them people.
Where'd you get that information from?
And that's, that's one of the rea, that's one of the reasons why it's down there.
All right, that's, we're not going to, no back and forth.
Okay, I-
From now on, they want to move it.
That's a lie.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Havery?
I have no, no comment on that one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Hi, Ms. McAuliffe, how are you?
Hi. I just, Linda McAuliffe, 119 Dorchester Road, Hackensack. I've lived here all my life. I raised four kids, I have grandchildren in the school system. I'm very proud to come from Hackensack. I read once, Mayor, in a publication or in the newspaper, that you said that you were embarrassed going to other towns that have these fancy facilities. We're not a money town, we're an intercity. We can't compete with Franklin Lakes or even River Edge or any of these towns. Our people are simple and not, we have a very diverse population in Hackensack, a very close population, I believe, but we're not a money town. And people are more interested in their taxes not going up. And who decided? Who decided these domes and this recreation was even needed? Of course, we always want to do things for the kids, but at such a hefty price tag? I have a real estate business. People don't want to move to Hackensack because of the taxes. And, and it hurts me when I have to explain to people what is good about Hackensack because all they hear is negativity. But you're hurting, I, I just don't think that it is necessary. You know, we, I taught my kids, you don't have to compete with the Joneses. And I don't think we have to compete with these other towns either. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner.
Again, Linda.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Good evening.
My name is Rose Askelis. I am a resident of this city for 92 years. Born and raised on Lodi Street, across from Broadway School. My suggestion is, Your Honor, leave things as they are or tear down the building and put another school there. If anything, if they're so short of school, tear down that building and put a new school. My sister lives on Broadway. You're going to pill up this building, it's going to block all their view. It isn't going to be nice for all of them. There will not be ample parking, there will not be anything. It's going to hinder our church. That parish has been there 100 years and it won't be there if we won't have the parking. Where are the people going to park? I've lived in this town and I want to die in this town, but I want to see everybody happy. So please, just consider.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
There goes my job.
She got you beat, Chuck. God bless you, ma'am. 92 years. Anybody else from the public? How are you, ma'am?
Good, thank you. Edith Martinez, Bloom Street. I happen to live in Ward 1 and I also happen to be involved with the soccer program. So I can speak very much on both counts, both buildings. A lot of the people who are speaking against the M&amp;M building live in Ward 1. So I'm going to say that they're probably in the best position to speak about what the neighborhood does and does not want. The general feeling from the public, just to be very open and clear, is that the, the resistance to hear us is because it feels like the council is going to support Councilman Sims on his rec building and then they're going to support Pataglia on his dome and they're going to support Kenestrino LaBras on the redevelopment. That's the, that's what everybody's saying and thinking. So we feel like that's where the resistance is, not because there's a couple of people who are always going to oppose. It, it runs much deeper than that. People are expressing things and the way this process has gone through, it doesn't really feel like people are listening. On the soccer count, I can tell you, I'm vice president of the travel side of the HJSA program and Leo's not even with us because he doesn't get along with us. He doesn't know what the soccer program needs. Soccer is an outdoor sport. We need the turf to be cared for, we need our grass field to be, you know, treated with better soil because it's bumpy and our players can twist their ankle. That might cost $1 or $2 million. That's what we really need. So if your intention is to put money into the community and to raise property values and to give the children what they need, because everybody throws that around, this is for the children, why not ask the people who live in Ward 1, who are in these programs, what the children need? Because I think that we're in a better position to talk about that than any of you. I don't even know if any of you live in Ward 1. I'm going to say, yeah. I mean, we're not trying to be confrontational or anything like that, but I think that at some point, you guys need to sleep at night. And if your moral values are that low that you can say things that are not true all the time, at some point, it's got to affect your conscience. Like, we're here, we're talking and people aren't listening. And that's a, that's a huge problem on every level, politically, morally. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
The mayor, Kenestrino LaBras. Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Killy Gex.
Aye.
Ken LaBras.
Aye.
Taglia?
One of the reasons I created the program for soccer in 1986 was because my son was not allowed to play in other towns. So I created the program for soccer. Through the program, many kids, they got scholarships. And it's no question that in the beginning, we used to have like about 14 guys. Ended in at least 12 or 13 were from Hackensack, the Bon Giovanni's, the Galorini's, the Karan Musas and everybody else. They all went to college and scholarships. There was one guy that come from Tina Fly that was in the team and he went to play three World Cups. And all the kids, they grow up now, they are 44-year-old, they're all good kids. That's the only thing that we're doing with the program. No charge, no money. When I start with this new team, I start with my grandson, was five-year-old. We got like about 12 kids from Hackensack, four kids from outside. But then with the time, the kids, they start dropping. And with no kid from Hackensack, they really want to join, especially in the age 10, 11-year-old. There was a person that come from the outside and was willing to put $4 million to do a better facility for the kids. The city start playing the game, the previous administration, Jack, remember that? The guy come to the city, he want to give the money to build it and the city was like a playing games. Finally, he went and built his own facility. The guy got the money and no way that I can compete with him. I stay in Hackensack and many of the kids, they stay over there. So I lost most of the players. One of the kids, right now, he got offered from two teams from Mexico and even the United States, they want the kid. He live in Pin Street and he's not allowed to play for me either. He didn't even play for the high school because the academy, they not allow the kids to play. My reward is only to try to create this kid and the way they can go to college and to be a good kid, that's all. It's no money, but we got problem with the field because the recreation in Hackensack been changing through the year. Now it's a business, you know? They collect so much money from the kids to play the coaches, something that we don't do. The only money that we collect is uniform, referees and the tournament that we go. We went to a tournament last week. Myself, I spent almost $250, I paid for my own room. I paid for my gasoline and the tolls. They got beautiful facilities in Maryland. They got soccer field, basketball, tennis in one complex. And that way, the parents and the kids spend the time, nice and healthy. Here in Hackensack, if you guys don't want it, it's okay. No dumps, no M&amp;M building, the kids on the street, I don't have no problem. I try to help. I try to, it's, hey, it's my time now. I try to help everybody, everybody see me in the fields, right? For 40 years, okay? So now, if you people don't want it, it's okay. I don't have no problem with that. But, but when the kids run into problems with drugs and everything else, when they got killed by you, Kathy, two guy got killed by you, don't say anything. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Good evening, all right, thanks for all for coming out tonight. Yesterday, we had an annual Memorial Day service. I want to thank the cultural arts department and the Memorial Day Committee for putting this event together and all the city departments who worked to make this a great event, along with the citizens who attended yesterday in the rain. Hackensack Baseball had their annual Memorial Day Tournament. This has been going on for 23 years. We had over 47 teams composed of athletes third grade to 10th grade. There were some challenges with the high tides, three fields were underwater and we had to move games to Little Ferry and Passaic, but the kids had fun. We are grateful for being able to work with Little Ferry, Passaic to get field time. Our summer camps are half full with three weeks left to register. Theater camp registration is closed, it always fills up first. Golf ended last week in the M&amp;M building. This was a success. This is the second year I see a golf team in the future. Volleyball in their rec center has two weeks remaining on its schedule. They play every Tuesday and Thursday evenings. We still have open swim at the high school every Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Our splash parks opened up this weekend and will continue to open up Saturdays and Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. up until June 26th. After June 26th, both splash parks will be opened up seven days a week, open to the public. The Hackensack Troce, our baseball semi-pro team, has planned a baseball clinic for our youth all-star team. Timing dates is coming soon. Last week, we had two grand openings, Aldi supermarket on Main Street and a Brazilian judicial studio on Bergen Street. Finally, to all of you Star Wars fans, on Thursday, June 1st, we will have our first movie night under the stars where that will be honoring the 40th anniversary of Star Worlds. We will have a dress-up contest in your favorite costume. This is a fundraiser in connection with tomorrow's kids at Hackensack University Medical Center. This will start 7:30 at Atlantic Street Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gettys?
As I stated at the last meeting, I am all for better and newer recreation facilities. It's needed. But from what I'm hearing tonight is that, it's not that nobody wants that, it's just that maybe we need to think about a different location.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe it should be Johnson Park where everything can be centrally locate, centrally put there, soccer, basketball, whatever, whatever is needed. I don't get that people don't want this. I, I just don't get that. I, I just get that they feel that it's going to be a burden on their neighborhood. And I'll be honest with you, I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood, even though it's there already. Even though it's there already, I wouldn't want it, an expanded facility there. Even though it's there already, I wouldn't want it, an expanded facility there, knowing that the church is there. I've been down there when the traffic converges, with the church, with the cultural arts, with the rec, with the residents. I've been down there, and it's a nightmare. Not, I don't know how much it happens, but I've experienced it.
It's a beautiful neighborhood.
And just because a public meeting isn't required, because it's a city project, doesn't mean that it shouldn't happen.
Do you know how many gyms we got in schools that go empty? They go empty?
Chuck, please.
Like I said, maybe the location just should be changed, maybe. You know, just stop and reassess. I don't think, I think we, most, the majority of us wants something new. But, you know, with no input, like you said, it's just creating a mess. But the other part of this is that, that what I spoke about before, about this town needing a new school, that is going to be an expensive endeavor. And what I said, I said that the Board of Ed and the council, they have to start planning strategically, to make sure that what we want to do here in town makes fiscal sense. All right? These are not cheap endeavors. They're needed endeavors, for the most part, but they're not cheap. And if we don't sit down, well, it won't be me, but if you guys don't sit down with the board and move these pieces around, and, you know, I'm just concerned. You know, I own a home, like a lot of you here, we're all taxpayers, and I just don't see how we can do these expensive endeavors without sitting down and talking to each other, especially with a school that's on the horizon. Listen, a new rec center is long overdue, and to this council's credit, it's becoming a reality. But somebody talked about public involvement. Why wasn't Pop Love and Sissy Manning given a chance to chime in? They've been out here for years, since the '90s, as far as I can remember, trying to get a public pool for this town. And do you remember Larry Riley?
Yes.
Larry Riley worked tirelessly to get, to work with the prior, with two prior councils to get a Boys and Girls Club. I mean, tirelessly, the man died trying to get this going in Hackensack. So, I mean, there are other people who, you know, I've talked to, who have great input on how a recreation facility could be done in one place with everything there. And I just think that people just need a chance to chime in. You know, because when residents aren't allowed to chime in, it just gives the perception that their voices don't count, and that should not be. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you. One more thing. Two more things, I'm sorry. We did a vote on Vision Media earlier, and I think you all know my position with Vision Media by now. But I feel that they have played this town like a fiddle. And why should we let them back into a contract after they left it only giving us 15 days notice? And their contract says a 60-day notice should be given. I think this stinks, and I'll have no part of it. Let's save the town some money now. The city manager and Al Dib are quite capable of handling any correspondence for the city. I wouldn't be opposed to some sort of needed agreement, as-needed agreement, if necessary, but only if necessary. We don't have to pay somebody $3,000 a month just to, you know, say we have a PR firm. And along with that, I would prefer a different PR firm. Last thing I'd like to say is that, Rich, he's not here right now, but I said it at the last meeting also, Dave came up number two. He should be deputy mayor.
Yes.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Is Ms. Pardo still here?
No.
She left?
Yes.
All right. Hopefully, she'll watch, but I want to make sure, because I did present to, at the time, city manager Troce about looking at the soccer fields, other areas for outdoor soccer fields. So, I'm now going to be handing that task over to you, sir. With Mr. Troce leaving, I never followed through on that, thinking he was taking care of that, but obviously, that never happened. So, I'd appreciate if you'd look into some of the areas that we have, where we might be able to use some of the existing grass we have for outdoor soccer. The Memorial Day ceremony on Sunday morning, I'm sorry, on Monday morning, at 10 o'clock, was a little rainy, but we had a great turnout. And there were some new people there. The Majestic Order Velks were there for the first time this year with the contingent. And they were nice enough to put out a wreath. There must have been about 20 wreaths put out. In my little speech about Memorial Day, I spoke about, you know, somebody had said "Happy Memorial Day" to me, and, you know, I always say "Same to you." And, you know, when I'm walking away, I'm thinking, why are we saying "Happy Memorial Day"? It's really not a happy day, per se. It's a day to mourn those who gave their lives so that we can live and be happy, that's for sure. But, you know, it mentioned, I'm sure there's Gold Star Moms don't look at Memorial Day as a happy day, or, you know, anybody who lost a loved one, or a friend, or someone close to them. But, you know, it came upon me, and I did a little research, that why doesn't it affect us, or why aren't we touched, like, back in the, you know, late '40s, early '50s? And the answer is pretty evident. In World War II, 12% of the population was in the armed forces. 12% of this country served in the armed forces at one time. Today, less than 1% of the armed forces serve. 1% of the population of the United States serve in the armed forces. So, it's not as close to us. Back in the '40s, and early, you know, late '40s in World War II, everybody knew somebody that was in the service. And everybody had somebody, they, you know, either a friend, or cousin, or whatever. And, you know, today's, especially the generation under us, I think, don't relate as much with this less than 1% of the population involved in the armed service. They can't relate to it as much. You know, the fact that my sons had a great uncle who died in Normandy in World War II, they can't relate to that. Had it been me, they could relate to that. So, you know, it's something we're losing grasp of, and we have to stop it, we have to pound it into our children and our grandchildren's head, the importance of those who died for our freedom, and we need to continue that. And I, you know, I ask all of you as citizens out there, and, you know, watching this, and people in this room, is to make sure you tell your kids and your grandkids how important Memorial Day is and why. It's not just a day to go shopping or have a barbecue, it's a day to really reflect on those who sacrificed everything so that we can even come here to a meeting like this. It's, you know, they gave all so that we can have this. So, the rec center, the M&M building, we're going to, obviously, it's going to be Planning Board, July, June 14th, 7 o'clock meeting, so come on down. And the Planning Board will hear your concerns, and there'll be more information on the building at that night as well. I asked about the outside fields, and I think that's it for the evening. Thanks to every, oh, Mr. Hernandez, are you still here?
I am, sir.
You know, my heart goes out to you, all right? You know I can't speak about it, because it's a personnel issue right now, but don't think I'm not thinking about what's happening here. And I will be talking with the city manager. But again, it's a personnel issue. I'm not promising anything. I promise you, we'll have a discussion, though.
I hope so, sir.
All right? Thank you. Motion to close the meeting?
Roll call.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.